Hi, Gail. Can you hear us? Are you able to unmute yourself, Gail?
There we go.
There you go.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay, perfect. We can hear you also. Thank you. You started that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, we're ready.
Also, okay, I call to order this meeting of the Planning Commission, May 10, 2022. Will you all please join me in a flag salute?
With allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Sorry, that's me.
I was looking for it right now. I can unmute it. Commissioner Sarkozy?
Here.
Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Here.
Vice Chair Struman?
Here.
Chair Willis?
Here.
Thank you.
If anyone has a cellphone or a pager or something similar, please silence it, put it on vibrate, or turn it off unless you're on duty as an emergency responder. I don't need to encourage social distancing, I don't think. And we've got a few people on Zoom. We'll go right to the consent calendar. We've got the minutes of the April meeting. Does anyone have any questions, or is there a motion?
Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the meeting of April 12, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to an administrative matter, an application 22-762 Wireless Communication Service Master Plan. Technically, this isn't a public hearing, but let's hear what staff has to say, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Chair. Before us tonight is a Wireless Communication Service Master Plan. This has been submitted by Iera Technologies Inc., who's based out of Modesto. They provide wireless internet service, web hosting, and data center services to Stanislaus, San Joaquin, and Merced Counties. According to our municipal code, any company or provider of wireless communication service in Escalon needs to process the master plan, and that's why they're with us tonight. Iera's primary wireless location is at the Escalon Fire Station. The fire department has an existing tower on their roof, and Iera has co-located on that. Iera has secondary stations at 1906 Main Street, which is Main Street Garage, 1900 McHenry at Marvell, and 1855 Coley, which is Lear Village. In the attachments, Iera has provided a map that shows their current locations, as well as future example sites, example sites that they might locate in the future. Approval of this master plan is not an approval or an authorization for a specific facility or device. It's an acknowledgement of Iera's wireless facility deployment plans in Escalon. The applicant still required to obtain permits for individual facilities when required by code. On the map, the proposed sites are approximate. They're subject to change. Iera does not need to return to Planning Commission each time they physically locate a device, especially if it's devices like OTARs. They're not, they have, the city's not able to regulate those, so they're able to locate those. But staff's recommending a condition of approval where each year when Iera renews their business license, they do submit a map to City Hall that shows what devices are physically in Escalon at that time. Public outreach. The master plan, it does not require a public hearing, but the residents were notified through the agenda process, which is published online and here at City Hall. Planning Commission's decision tonight begins a 10-business-day appeal period, which expires May 24 at 5:00 p.m. Staffs reviewed and received, reviewed the comments from other agencies and put together the attached conditions of approval. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the application tonight. Even though this is not a public hearing, Planning Commission is still welcome to take any public comments, if anybody has any. And if Planning Commission determines to approve the application, they should find that the master plan's not a project according to CEQA. However, out of an abundance of caution, we would still like to file a notice of exemption with the county. And so below are the brief conditions of approval for this master plan. Approval grants Iera an approved wireless communication service master plan. Each year, they would need to submit a map showing their existing sites in Escalon. This would go along with their business license renewal. They have to comply with all city codes and ordinances, and then indemnification. Attached is their project description. If you have any questions, staff is here. The applicants are in the audience. We also have Gail virtually on GoToMeeting. She is the city attorney, kind of in the expert field of wireless communications. So if you have legal questions, she's on the line as well.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff? Based on the report? So if we're not having a public hearing, can we just ask the applicant to step up? Or somebody associated? I assume that these people are them?
These are applicants, yes.
This is not totally applicable to what we're looking at tonight, but I just have questions, not knowing exactly what is involved. You've got your main node, which is at what elevation above the firehouse?
The building is about 20 feet, and the tower itself is 80 feet.
So then you have these, the auxiliary locations, they look like there might be two stories up, or?
Some are one story, some are two stories. Above the roof line are usually like five feet, six feet. So it's really short on those.
So any other additional sites that you'd be erecting pieces of equipment on? Is the height relevant, or is it the distance from the main node, or?
It can be relevant. So we really have two products. One is our standard wireless high-speed internet, which can go up to about 120 megabits. That is the type of service that's served by the fire department and some of our taller towers around the county. The other type of service we're providing is ultra-high speed, kind of using newer technology of antennas. Those have a very, very short distance between the repeater and the customers, typically, you know, 100 meters to 800 meters, so very, very short distances. You don't need to be very high on those. So typically on those, like the three additional locations that we specified in here, those are just rooftop. They're very short mass, and those would serve a very tight area around each of those locations. And then they would feed other, kind of hop from site to site as appropriate to expand the high-speed internet, ultra-high speed internet service.
So the diagram we have, where the fire department tower is basically in the center, would this area still be covered without the auxiliary locations?
Correct. This would be the standard service area that a tall tower would be able to reach typically. And then I think a few pages later, we just did examples of like the city of Escalon, what that would look like. And the yellow dots kind of represent an example of how we would expand throughout the city using short.
Based on location, height of building, both?
Correct.
Okay.
And willingness of the participant, whether it's residential or business, to partner with us, to, you know, expand our network.
And what would cause you to expand the network? To, like, number of?
Subscribers.
Subscribers?
Yeah.
Okay.
People are often clamoring for alternate choices for internet providers. So we want to provide that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't want to hog this. Anybody else have questions?
I have a question for staff. So can you remind me what our tower height requirement is in the municipal code?
I don't recall offhand. I can look it up. But they're located, their main location on the fire department is an existing fire department tower. And they're not proposing a tower at this time. It could possibly be in their future plans, and if they choose to do that, then they would come before Planning Commission because towers are conditional use permits. So at such time that they choose to deploy one of those, they would be coming back before you.
Yeah, that was a comment that I had. So in the agenda, on the Iera report, on, sorry, I'm sharing an agenda with Jeremy. But on the Iera report, on page two, item I, it says possible 180 to, or 80 to 120 tall tower installation within the city of Escalon limits, subject to permitting and approval by city planning. So is that saying that if they were to do another tower, then that would trigger a conditional use permit, correct?
Right. Approval tonight does not approve any device, any tower, any facility. It's acknowledgement of Iera and their plans to be in Escalon. But any towers, any devices that we can regulate, not the OTARs, we, you know, they're able to do those without coming to us each time. But if it requires a permit or a use permit from the city, then they have to come for that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there may be a case also where there's, we do need an extra height that are above the OTAR rules, in which case we would come, even for the ultra-high, we would come and get the proper permits and approval for that.
Okay.
One other question for the applicant. Honestly, I do not know hardly anything related to radio frequencies and ultra-high speed and high-speed internet. But, you know, recently, we approved a large tower for a competitor of yours. Does, does that impact? I mean, how does it work? Do you work on one frequency and they work on a different frequency? Or, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're just not creating all of this master plan and all these towers and creating a little wireless umbrella over Escalon and creating craziness up there.
Right. So there's really two types of frequencies that you should be aware of. One is licensed. Like many of the cell carriers have licensed frequencies, what they pay a lot of money for. They are allocated a certain frequency or frequencies that they operate on.
Okay.
We do have some of those licenses, like CBRS band and so forth, that we may be operating on. But for the most part, most wireless, fixed wireless providers will operate on unlicensed bands, like the 5 gigahertz band, the 24 gigahertz band, 60 gigahertz band. Those are unlicensed and regulated by the FCC. So any equipment we or the other providers put on their towers are obviously, have to conform to the FCC regulations in terms of power output and so forth. And they will be using those unlicensed bands. Now, we will typically, you know, if we put up an antenna, we will typically scan and say, oh, that competitor is using such and such frequency, and we'll try to avoid that type of interference, as I'm sure they do with us as well. So, you know, we all try to be good shepherds in terms of the frequencies that we hop on to serve our customers.
This has no bearing on my opinion of the approval or not, but just for our constituents, I'm assuming that you and the competitor play nice in the same sandbox together?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
I believe you guys were on the call that night, that meeting with the other company.
We fully support, you know, more choices in an area for internet providers.
What was your name, sir?
Matthew. Matthew Ford.
Matthew, I'm not supposed to share my personal opinions up here, but I will share my personal opinions. I, if this master plan goes through, I wish you and your competitor a whole bunch of luck and support because there is a certain carrier out there that is known for three letters in their name. And customer service-wise, they are absolutely horrible. So.
Call them the Empire.
The dark side.
Mr. Engel, questions or?
I do. I do have some questions. One, as I'm looking at page 10 in Exhibit H, it shows the map, we have it up on the screen there. It shows the yellow dots are just a sample of future rooftop hubs. What do those look like?
The antennas that would be served off of there, they look like a small coffee can typically. Each one's a little different depending on the maker, but the ones we use are typically a coffee can size. Mounted to a J-mount or a pole or a non-penetrating mount on the roof. So they're pretty low-profile. They're not very large at all.
And so that agreement with that location would be between Iera and the residential homeowner, or?
Business owner, correct.
Business owner, and that's something that is out of our wheelhouse, staff? As far as needing approval for that? Are there conditions that are required for that to happen?
Gail, are you familiar with the type of device that they're describing? Is that something that they don't need to come to us for?
Well, I think it's, and thank you for having me. My name is Gail Carish. Just for the record, a partner of Esposit Krieger. I practice in telecommunications law in here to help assist you this evening. I think, just to answer, based on what I'm hearing, so whether you would need a city permit or not is going to depend, first of all, whether, if it is a, what they call an OTAR, an over-year reception device, if it qualifies for that, there is certain federal preemption of local regulation. But there are parameters for those in terms of size and what the use is and things like that. So assuming that they're OTARs that we're talking about, then they wouldn't require a permit. If it falls outside of that category, then it may well require a permit under your code.
That's not part of the question. Sir, I'm sure you're using this technology in other cities. Is that correct? So in those instances, are you able to comply with what she was just saying and have the ability to not have those permitted? Or are they having to be permitted in the cities that you're currently operating in?
The ones that fall in the OTAR are not permitted.
Is that the majority of the type that you currently use and probably plan on using?
That's correct. Now, there may be a case, like I said, for example, one of the OTAR rules is it has to be no higher than a certain height to meet that criteria. I think it's 12 feet. So if there was a case where, oh my gosh, we can't see back to where we're serving it from, we need to go 20 feet, at that point, we would engage with the city to permit that particular location.
When you make these agreements with the property owner, is there a compensation that the property owner receives?
It'd be. One of the OTAR requirements is that we serve a customer at that location. So in many cases, we say, oh, this would be a great location to have kind of a little repeater, and we may work out a deal with that business owner or that residential person, saying, hey, we can pay you a little bit of rent for the space up on your, up on your facility. And in exchange, we would be allowed to repeat off of that.
And then since, just to follow that up, since there wouldn't be a permitting issue with the type of device that we're talking about, is there any type of requirement for us to, or for you to notify surrounding property owners? Is there anything that could interfere with them? Or any type of notification for them, saying that a device is going in near them?
I acknowledge there's no requirement for that. The unlicensed frequencies that you operate on and that everybody's home router works on, you implicitly opt into the FCC's ruling for Part 15, which means basically that you accept interference if it comes. You really don't have a say in that. So, you know, obviously, like, we try to be good shepherds and make sure we pick clean channels and not cause noise, but the unlicensed bands are free for anybody to operate off of.
Yeah, excuse me. So just a couple of questions. So will we see a similar map to this from your competitor as they branch out? I mean, not saying they will, and you probably don't know the answer, but if they did, they would be wanting to do the same thing, correct, to reach the city?
Yeah, it depends on the technologies and the plan that they do. Some competitors prefer to just have larger towers farther apart. The thing about that is you can only get so much speed with those type of antennas because the farther out you go, the, you know, the weaker the signal gets, the slower the speeds get, so forth. So some of the newer technologies can do gigabit-plus speeds across these antennas if they're very close. So, you know, we'd like to definitely try to expand and go head-to-head with, for example, the local cable companies and go head-to-head with them. So that's really kind of what our plan is for a city like Escalon.
It sounds like the devices are, I mean, probably not even as intrusive as a satellite dish.
No, they're typically smaller.
Yeah.
So the hub-and-relay ones, like I said, are about coffee can size. The dishes that go on to each of the residences to point back to it are, you know, sizes to my hands. So they're pretty small and intrusive.
And lastly, do you have a timeframe of when this might all be implemented? It sounds interesting.
Kind of happening now. We've got the three locations that we're expanding this ultra-high, and then, you know, the key challenge is just finding willing participants to work with us to expand. Much of this is very much dependent on line of sight. If a big tree in the way, that's our mortal enemy, is the trees that block the signal. So the key to having a good distributed network is, you know, line of sight and as high as a building as you can potentially have. So we're working on it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Yeah, a couple of questions. What is like life expectancy of these devices? How long do they last?
How long do the antennas last? Well, with, as, same thing with computers, there's, every year, there's new models that come out and upgraded things. We typically see about a four-year life.
Or you come out annually, or twice a year, or three, every five years and replace various antennas?
Yes, and we'll typically also upgrade the customer's antennas with the latest and greatest to, you know, ensure that they get the biggest speed.
And then looking at the map with all these yellow dots, the goal, I'm assuming here, is you have circles that at some point, there's a, where there's an overlap, so there's no gaps. Is that what you're looking for in the city limits?
Ideally, yes. I mean, a lot of it would be driven on what customers, what they currently have and what they, you know, what they want. So we'll typically deploy and work with a customer or group of customers in an area, especially if they're underserved or they don't like their carrier. You know, we'll expand into those areas. But ultimately, the goal is, yes, to have some overlap so that we can serve anybody within a certain area of the city or in the.
So for instance, if you look at the map, it'd be the south-west area, yeah. So where that one dot is, how, what's the circumference that that would cover in that neighborhood?
Ultra-high speed can go up to about 800 meters.
800 meters.
So times three, so about?
About a mile.
Okay.
About a mile.
Ultimately, what's your goal on how many of these high-speed antennas are you looking at installing in the city limits? If it does not grow any more than?
Probably about 20 to 30 would cover a lot of the areas that are the densest populations. Now, the rural areas, those are a little more difficult because you can't reach, you know, they're a little bit further than what these ultra-high ones can do. So we would rely on, like, the fire department tower to reach them at, you know, some less speed, but still fast enough for what they need.
I have another question.
One more? You talked about coffee can size, but the one that's on top of the garage looks different than what's on Marvell, or there's no picture for the one on Lear. Is that because you had to go higher, put it on the tripod to make it higher?
It's typically different models. So many times, the one on Marvell, we needed to feed from the fire station. So what we did is get a, it's about a 18-inch or less, maybe 16-inch dish, shot back to the fire department, and then from there, we put the coffee can size repeater up on that area that serves the, you know, 400, 500-meter range.
And as technology changes, might there be a change in the size or the appearance or the?
Yes, although typically, they'll still be fairly small because of the distances.
Smaller, yeah. Okay.
Chair, I have two more questions.
Of course you do.
I'm sorry. If my memory serves me correct, right when COVID hit, didn't your tower go down in a windstorm at the fire department?
It did. So the fire department's tower toppled over. It's about a 40-year-old tower, and we had been on it for about five years. But that was really terrible, I think it was February of 2019? 2019, the winds picked up, and we actually did an analysis on it. And one of the guy anchor points that was put in 40 years ago had enough twist in that over long periods of time that it fatigued the metal and then snapped from the high winds.
Oh, and for my fellow planning commissioners, that was right at the start of everybody's favorite thing, distance learning. And so there was a lot of comments that Iera really jumped on it and really helped bring internet back to the community when we were all dealing with the struggles of internet or distance learning. So thank you for making that a priority for residents.
Appreciate that.
The other question that I had, and this is specifically for you, is for our constituents out there that really are one, I don't know if anybody's watching this or not, but if people are interested in reaching out to you to help expand this, how do they contact you to, that you can come look at their residence or their business to try to help build this up?
They would call our main number. They can talk to myself or Tina or any of the other staff, and we'll direct them to the right place to. And we would typically look up their address if it's an area that we already have a node nearby. You know, we can serve them from it. If it's a new area that they are interested in us getting to, you know, and they're, you know, not surrounded by big trees, for example, we would be happy to work with them and expand the network. That's how we've expanded a lot of our network, is those type of partnerships with companies, typically around the county, with companies, but also residential neighborhoods as well.
How fast do you think it's going to go eventually?
Pretty fast. I mean, the hardest part right now is just the supply chain, buying pallets of these antennas so we have them in stock. But really, you know, it's getting the antennas and keeping the installation piece working. But yeah, we are able to deploy a new node or a customer on site, usually within a day or two. So it's pretty quickly, and the technology is just amazing.
Trying to explain to a seven-year-old what the term "you've got mail" means is, yeah. It's like, you know, the sound of the old dial-up.
I think you could pick it as a ringer on some phones.
He said, Dad, why's it making all that noise? You should just push the button, and it's right there.
Very scary. Some of my kids ask me, what is email now? Because they're so used to texting and TikTok and those type of things. So I feel old. Talk to me about that.
Nothing further, Chair.
Thank you.
I've got one more.
Okay.
Relatively new technology, correct?
Yes.
Being used in the public for approximately?
Fixed wireless has been a long time. It's been 20-plus years for many of the antennas that are out there. The newer style antennas that do these super-high speeds are, it's like every six months, new technologies come out. So some of the ones we're looking at, deploy on the yellow dots, are, have recently been released, like within the last six months.
With the technology being that new, and this is just going to be an opinion-based question, or answer, I guess, on your part, with the technology being that new and probably not very long-term studies based on, long-term studies on effects, on public health or wildlife or anything like that, probably nonexistent. So in your opinion, is the technology safe?
Yes, and I'll tell you why. The bands and the frequencies that have been used have been used for a long time. What's not been in existence for a long time is these smaller distributable mesh-type networks. I will tell you that the, you know, a typical cell tower antenna with their licensed frequencies typically puts out up to 10 watts. And your phone, your cellphone that you put up to your ear is about 2 watts. Many of these antennas use a fraction of a watt. So it's much, much, much lower power. Many of these antennas use a fraction of a watt, so it's much, much, much lower power. It's basically some, very similar to your router in your home. It's low power and it's regulated by the FCC. So the FCC says these devices can't be more than a certain power level. And, you know, they presumably, I mean, the manufacturers of these devices have to go through a rigorous FCC certification for this stuff. So we would hope that the FCC has done their due diligence to make sure it's safe.
Any more questions? Is there a motion? Or more discussion?
I'll make a motion. So it seems like what I'm doing tonight. I'll make a motion to approve the Iera wireless, approve the application 22-762 for Iera Technologies, Inc., for the approval of their wireless communication service master plan.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in?
Chair, we, we also have to authorize the staff to, I'm sorry, I have to continue this.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just not sure if you asked if there was any other public comment. I can't tell if there's anyone else in the room or anyone else that wanted to make any public comments before you.
Does anyone else want to make a comment? Okay, thank you, Gail, for that. Did you have anything else to add, Gail?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to retract my motion. And I'm going to make a motion. First motion is to, we have found that the master plan is not a project within the meaning of Section 15378 within the SEQUA guidelines. Do I have to read this whole thing? Okay. And I also included in my motion want to authorize staff to file the SEQUA notice of exemption. And then finally approve the wireless master plan with the conditions of approval as noted.
Okay, Steve, do you still want to second the motion?
Yeah, I won't take it back.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next, is matters presented from the audience? Is there any, is there anybody else in, on Zoom or any other items to be presented? Okay, we'll move on to staff communications.
Just to let you know that we
Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to have a June meeting, and we do have a July meeting in the works as well.
In July.
We are busy.
We're busy.
That's a good thing.
No vacations for anybody.
And then I have a follow-up item. I'd sent some emails out over the past few weeks regarding a planning commissioner training. It's scheduled for May 20th. If anybody is interested, let me know and I can get you registered. That's, that's the one day that's being offered at this time. It's through the Institute of Local Government. And the May 20th date applies to, where am I looking? San Joaquin, Stanislaus, Merced, and Madera Counties. And so those are the four counties that will participate in the May 20th training. And then they'll have future dates coming out for additional trainings, but that's the first one they have scheduled at this time.
Where's the location for that?
I believe they said it was in Stockton. I'll have to double-check, but I think it is somewhere in Stockton.
Is it possible for you to email us that flyer?
Sure.
Take a look at it?
Yeah, I think I had sent it out originally. It might be a little more updated now. 9:30 to 4:00 PM. It doesn't have it listed on here where it's located. It just says in the county, but I remember reading somewhere it's Stockton. So yeah, I could follow up and get that forwarded over to you. And if anybody's interested, let me know and we can get you registered.
Over the years, there have been several workshops, classes that I've attended, and I feel like I've benefited from them all. At this late date, I don't know that I want to.
Are, are more than three of us allowed to attend?
Yes, it's training. Yeah, so all five of you can attend if you like.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I have a lot going on. I know at the last meeting
Excuse me.
No problem.
Sorry, no, no COVID, just, I have nasal polyps, which makes me breathe funny.
No problem.
I just tested, so it's, I had to do it for medical.
Oh, nice.
Medical, to, to go to the doctor, they may have to take a test.
Wow, still, huh?
Yes, still.
I know at the last meeting, we talked about bringing the item that the council had authorized regarding the public hearings and how to send notification out. And unfortunately, we didn't make those deadlines to be able to make this meeting with other things that were going on in the office. And so that will be put on our next meeting in June. And I'm trying to think of, let's see, anything else that sticks out to me? We're in May. Coming into June. I can't really think of anything, so I think we're okay.
Okay. Commissioner Communications?
Couple of questions. Was there discussion with the council on putting something in the, I guess, some ordinance to be able to post when a proposed project comes into town?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that was the item that I had mentioned at the last meeting that we were going to have on this meeting.
Okay.
Now, we missed that deadline that was in the code on, and so we couldn't move forward with it, so.
I just want to make sure that that's in
Yeah, no, and that was definitely proposed.
Before something big comes in town?
Sure, yeah, no, that was proposed, and, and that will be included in the update.
I, I'm, all the time we spent on that, I was surprised. I haven't yet run across anything at home dealing with that, but we
I mean, and we were looking because everybody wanted to know how we, how we missed it, and we're looking at each other like
Yeah.
That was when Dwayne was here.
Yeah, that wasn't a big deal. I mean, it was, I mean, yeah.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Although I was thinking, when you were talking about you missed the, the deadline for it, I thought you were talking about the notices sent, sending to, you know, residents or business owners within
That's a part of it as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that portion of the municipal code specifies procedures for staff, and so we get a type of project in, how far we want to mail out the notice of public hearing, how we, how we want to distribute the public hearing notice, and then adding a requirement for a board to be posted, yeah. And so the, the council agreed upon certain criteria that, at that meeting, and so we'll bring it to you with that criteria. And then if you want to recommend changes or alterations to that, we would take those and bring them to council for review. But though, all of those actions, because it's zoning code, it has to be scheduled for public hearings for both planning commission and council. And so we have to meet the same criteria that we would be updating to get it in, and we just didn't have a chance to, to get that completed, so.
Mr. Rangel?
I have nothing.
Worse. Just a couple of things. So Orlando's, the status?
They have pulled their permit for the remodel of the building, so they, they're able to start construction on the building. They are working with Environmental Health Department on the fueling station permits. And they are finalizing with Caltrans the driveway situation off of Highway 120. So as, and they're updating their plans, they're pretty sure that they've got something agreed upon, so. They keep moving.
Good. What's the status of the housing, planned housing development off of Brandon?
We met with the property owners and the housing developer last week. And as you're aware, our municipal code has, has inclusionary housing or affordable housing requirements where you would either construct or pay an in-lief fee. And so we're going to be working on with them. They've requested to have that addressed prior to moving forward with the project because they didn't want to move forward with the project and invest a lot of money and effort into things in the event that something doesn't work out for the project. And so we'll be working on that and bringing that to council first. And that's basically the council reviewing, either approving them to pay an in-lief fee or constructing affordable units, how many of those units would be and/or what designation they would have. So it would be either low, very low, moderate. And typically in the past, we've worked off of moderate because we have in our regional housing needs an allotment of housing that we're supposed to construct, and we still have a lot of them in that moderate housing, so. And that will all be reviewed at council level and discussed.
So if there is a, this is just a procedural question, but if there is a, something in the municipal code that we as the planning commission or a few of us really want to look at, maybe talking about a revision to that section of the municipal code, do we have to wait for council to provide that direction to us to review it?
No, you could, you could provide that. I need a majority of you to provide that direction that you want, that's something you'd want to review. And then we can bring it back to you to review, and then you can provide a recommendation to send it to council.
So it sounds like in June and July, we're going to be busy. But maybe later on in the summer, early fall, depending on how the rest of my fellow planning commissioners feel, I, I would like us to take a look, do a deep dive and a hard look at the requirements for sidewalk curb and gutter requirements for projects. Because we've dealt with this recently, well, it seemed like it was recently, but it was probably a couple of years ago with
Where?
with the Claire's and then last meeting with the gentleman who was going to do the renovations. And I think we need to really investigate that and figure out, put some requirements into that as opposed to just as a blanket statement. I understand you guys are doing what you're doing, but we have to have some criteria in there.
And what other cities are doing too?
I mean, we did that a few years ago. We did bring that item to you and what other cities were doing. And at that point, if I recall correctly, and I'd have to go through the minutes to find out, I think that, that you guys at that point, which I know things can change over the years, agreed that you, that you preferred it coming in the form of the project, whether their use permit or their approval, to where you could address it at that discretion, taking that project into consideration. I realize that the ones that have come up more recently aren't project-related, and so that's probably what the difference is. Whereas with the, the one on Kern Street, and then we just had the one on Roosevelt. Those ones, because they had to come to planning commission for an approval, that gives you the discretion to, to essentially treat it like a case-by-case scenario because they're coming for that approval, evaluate it in that, in that aspect, and, and either maintain that condition or remove it. And so that was kind of where we were the last time, where at that time, I don't believe the planning commission provided any, any recommendation or changes to the council on that section of the municipal code because you, at that time, the planning commission preferred it that way. But I realize these ones are not project-related, and so we can definitely put that on our schedule to look into in the fall.
Maybe we continue the process, just looking at it on a case-by-case basis. However, I think it's important that we at least do our due diligence and take a look at it and make sure that, okay. Because I think we, we passed that prior to the last two, and it seems like it's starting to come up. And, you know, moving forward, there are, it sounds like there's going to be some projects where this may come up as a requirement. So I just want to be able to look at it so that we know that we've done our due diligence.
That's fine.
Asha, so what are you exactly looking at? My concern is, is that if we have a development and the street is in need of repair, you know, and they, and they remodel the whole house, you know, what I'm hearing you saying, you don't want them to be responsible on fixing this or installing the sidewalk curb gutters?
Negative.
No.
What I'm saying right now, the way that the municipal code reads, is that if there's not existing sidewalk curb and gutter, then that requirement in municipal code triggers it. Doesn't matter what the dollar threshold, doesn't matter anything.
Okay.
But, I mean, if they're spending $100,000 to remodel their, their house, in my opinion, then they can afford to put in a curb gutter sidewalk. The gentleman that was here from Roosevelt, he's just trying to provide for his family.
Yeah.
And yet the municipal code requirement triggers it, and it's like, come on, no, he's just trying to give his wife a walking closet for crying out loud.
I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, though, that was my only comment.
Mr. Mahias on the corner of First and Walnut, did we make him put in a sidewalk?
Reyes, yeah.
Reyes?
Erwin, Erwin and First.
Erwin.
We did.
Okay.
Yes, he had an accessory structure. What was it, like a thousand square foot shop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we, you did require the sidewalk to be put in.
On one side, because one side had it and the other side did not. Erwin's side did not have it.
Two more quick things.
Before you move on, so if we're able to get a consensus, the majority wants to look at that, then we can start scheduling, start scheduling on our side.
Yeah, well, it's worth taking a look at. Maybe tweak the wording and
Provide exemptions, maybe.
Yeah. Give, give some, some guidelines so, you know, a property owner comes in, they, they know what the total impact of what they want to do is going to be.
Like, for example, the remodel of the Brayton residence, you know, that, that, in my opinion, that wasn't a remodel, that was a complete rebuild. But, you know, if they're completely redoing the house, then something like that should trigger a new sidewalk curb and gutter. Somebody else that's doing a $20,000, $25,000 addition to their house, they're going to spend $10,000 putting in a sidewalk for a $25,000 addition. It just doesn't seem equitable on both sides.
Yeah, and there are cities that, that base it on valuation of the project, yeah, so we can bring that back up. When, in regards to the sidewalks, a lot of the issues we run into as well is, is we've, we've done a sidewalk inventory. I believe we did that in either 16 or 17. And so we have a map that indicates every area in the city that's lacking sidewalk, and it's been pretty sporadic over the years. So the city typically only installs sidewalks with a new, new development or project. If we're doing like a reconstruction on a road and it doesn't have sidewalks or the sidewalks are damaged, we would replace them out as a part of the project. Otherwise, as subdivisions are being built, we require the, the developer to put in, you know, streets and sidewalks and such. And so there are a lot of areas throughout this town where sidewalk is missing and/or not provided. And so we, we get just as many people complaining that they don't have a sidewalk as, as, you know, that the sidewalks have issues and stuff like that. And, and so, I mean, typically, the reason it's, that it's, and our code is written that way is because our risk management authority, our insurance policies, want the city to, our code is written that it's the property owner's responsibility, and that's, that's California state law, state and highway code. A lot of other cities have gone a step further and placed the responsibility and the liability onto cities. And our risk management has always recommended that we do that because even though it's in the public right of way, it's still on their property. And so that's thing, that's something that we've looked at in the past as well. And so it's, I know it's been brought up a lot because many people have mentioned it being a city issue and stuff like that, and it is. But it's a, it's an issue in every city.
Right.
And so just a reminder on that, I think they did, I want to say maybe 15 years ago, I went to a, I used to work in a public works department, and I went to a, a seminar that was held through the Public Works Association. And that was the big thing, was these big cities, Sacramento, San Francisco, and how 90% of all their sidewalks and stuff were all out of compliance because it's, it's one of those things, it's so expensive, you can't afford to keep up on it, you just can't. And so we take them as we can, and then, yeah, when we see that there's a lacking of sidewalks, the code at some point was written and approved to try to address that. And so, yeah, I mean, anything that the planning commission's interested in addressing that that's related to Title 17, which is zoning, the idea there is that's your section of the code that you're supposed to have. First divs that basically, but then anytime you make a change, the council gets to review it and make any further change.
It would be one thing if our budget was really robust and we could.
Yeah.
Do the sidewalks for everybody, but at least we have the option of granting variances, so.
Correct.
So there is that out, so.
Yeah, and then another thing is like, what's been brought up numbers of times too is prevailing wage. Anything that we, we do that's over $1,000, we have to pay the prevailing wage on. And so typically, we also look or, or put it into a project for a property owner because the quote that we're going to get to get the work done is usually going to be twice as much or more than if the property owner were to do it themselves. And so I think that was something that was looked at at that time as well when they updated the section of the code to, to address that, because ideally, yeah, we'll never be able to afford it or put it all in, but how many people we've had the last few years, how come I didn't get a sidewalk? I want a sidewalk. My real estate agent told me that if I came in here and asked for a sidewalk, you'd install it for me. And we're like, no, we don't install sidewalks.
One last thing, Chair, and this is just for Claire. So I noticed on the stipend check that your title is still listed as interim city manager.
Oh, okay.
So.
Actually, on mine, it said intera, and then the rest of it wasn't there.
Oh, gotcha.
So just FYI.
Okay, I can let her know.
Nothing else.
Okay. I don't know if everybody knows, but it'll be in tomorrow's paper. Marv Schmidt passed away on April 29th. He was 94, no, 92, and they're going to have the service, the visitation on the 20th, and then service on the 21st. You know, Burwood has a policy, they only do one burial Saturday, and they do it before 12:00. So then the, the landscapers can get off the rest of the day. And so to try and tie in a burial service with availability in a church, I, I was told by a family member that, you know, they've got three different locations and times for all of this, but I, I was sad to hear that he had passed.
That's Randy's father?
Yeah. But anyway, that's all I have. Anything else? No? All right, meeting adjourned.
So where are you going?